I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the November 18th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. And if you need listening devices, Robert is in the front row and he can help you with those. Okay? Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion with a change. I'd like to move item number 10 to between item number one and two.
And a motion to amend the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Oh, we have a roll call vote. Excuse me. And I need a second.
Second.
Now, I need a roll call vote. Kelly.
Yes.
Peckus.
Yes.
Bennega. Oh, we lost you.
I don't know what happened. Did he hang up?
Shall we move on with the agenda?
Here it comes.
Can we move it just?
He lost his connection. I'm calling.
We're calling you back right now.
But Gerald, we are in the middle of voting to approve the amended agenda and we would like a vote from you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Barth?
Yes.
Hiebger. Yes. And motion passes five to zero. Now we need a motion to approve the amended agenda with a roll call vote, please. Oh, I need, first I need a motion.
Yeah, second.
And a second. Now I need a roll call vote. Kelly.
Yes.
Peckus.
Yes.
Bennega.
Yes.
Barth.
No.
Hiebger. Yes. Motion passes four to zero.
Four to one.
Four to one, excuse me. Item number two is to approve, oh, I'm sorry.
Item ten.
Item number 10 is consider a resolution giving final approval to a project with Augustana College Association and the issuance of economic development revenue bonds to finance such project and permit reimbursement of certain project costs from bond proceeds. Sherry Roder.
Good morning, Sherry. I represent Augustana College and I'm here to request that you postpone action on this item until next Tuesday's meeting. The documents in the resolution previously provided contemplate one purchaser and one bond. Since that time, there's another bank that wants to participate, so we will need to have two purchasers and two series of bonds. The total bond amount remains the same. The bonds remain solely payable by the college. These are not obligations of the county. And with that request, I would appreciate your moving it.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that? Yes. We need a motion to move item number 10, which is consider a resolution giving final approval to, did we have a date, Robert, for that? Which meeting? Moving that one week, so I need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion, second.
A motion and a second. I need a roll call vote. Kelly.
Yes.
Peckus.
Yes.
Bennega.
He lost his connection again. It was working fine.
I'll have to put him on speakerphone.
Madam Chairman, I've seen this happen before when other devices are on the same Ethernet stream, in other words, other computers or...
Okay. So Commissioner Bennega, we are on a motion to defer item number 10 until next week's meeting, which is the Augustana bond issue. And we're up to you for a vote.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Hiebger. Yes. Motion passes five to zero. We'll go on with the regular agenda now.
Item number two is to approve the County Commission minutes of November 12th, 2014.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
To a move.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns, additions? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Kelly.
Yes.
Peckus.
Yes.
Bennega.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Hiebger. Yes. Motion passes five to zero.
The next item, our bills to be paid in the amount of $413,718.17.
I'll make a motion, but I have a comment.
I second his motion.
I have a motion and a second with a comment on the bills. Commissioner Peckus.
Yeah, I was going through the bills and I noticed there was a disproportionate number of, looks like, bills that were coming out of the court systems. And most of them appear to be court-appointed attorney bills. And I know that Commissioner Barth and I did have a conversation about it. Jeff, why don't you go ahead and...
Well, if I may, there just are a number of bills over $1,000. And there are a number of bills that one attorney has billed us the exact same amount four times on the same client, 78338, times four. And we have nine bills of over $1,000 and a couple of them are over $2,000. And so it's just an unusual amount of bills from outside attorneys appointed to represent defendants here in that county.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments?
Well, in the conversation Jeff and I had, one of the items that we need to remind many of our county taxpayers, as well as the commission and the courts, is that the person actually reviewing the bill is actually the judge that actually approves that lien. And so they're obligated to go ahead and review that. And once they sign that particular voucher or lien, it becomes an obligation on the part of the county to pay it. We don't have the authority to go ahead and deny payment. If we do, it'll result in action. And so, which, quite honestly, once they sign that voucher, it's a lien. And, you know, our theoretic defense against defending against that obligation that the county has is pretty limited. So we have to make sure that we all work hand in glove as a team to make sure that these costs are going to be adequately reviewed. And, you know, we look at these every week. And so when Commissioner Barth brings up these concerns, it's not something that, you know, it goes into a vacuum and nobody has a chance to review it.
Again, here, fine.
I remember that when we had this come up at budget times, we had the opportunity with the auditor's office to go ahead and to review these bills, particularly by vendor. And I think that it would be prudent for us to go ahead and to continue to have that access. So I think that the auditor should be advised that we're going to be asking to have access to that database again to allow us to look at the vendor bills. Because I know that some of these bills need to be reviewed.
Commissioner Barth, do you have any additional comments?
Well, I would just say that, you know, we budget for court costs and they're completely out of our control on these court-appointed attorneys. And in the meantime, of course, you know, the alternative is to hire additional defense attorneys in our public advocate, public defender's office.
Krista?
Yeah, just to be clear, too, that when inappropriate cases, when there's no legal authority for these bills to be paid in certain cases, the state's attorney's office with your authorization has brought a case to the Supreme Court to get that addressed, too. And so we do have that option, but of course, appeals to the Supreme Court are not short affairs. But just be aware that that is a remedy that you have on certain ones without legal authority.
Any other questions or comments on the bills? Roll call vote. Kelly.
Yes.
Peckus.
Yes.
Bennega.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Hiebger. Yes. Motion passes five to zero.
Item four, reports the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of October 31st, 2014. The general fund surplus analysis as of September 30th, 2014, and the Register of D's official statement of revenue collected during October 2014 have all been received and they are placed on file in the auditor's office. The next item is item five, personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve routine actions.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second on routine actions. Any concerns, questions, a roll call vote, please. Kelly.
Yes.
Peckus.
Yes.
Bennega.
Ma'am Chair, I'd suggest maybe we just do this on a speakerphone. Gerald is able to watch it on Channel 16 and perhaps it'd be a lot easier than...
Can we do that, Robert?
We keep losing.
Yeah. Commissioner Bennega, we are on motion to approve routine action. Up to you.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Hiebger. Yes. And that was personnel, excuse me. Five to zero. Motion passes.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item is notice and requests. Item A is to authorize a county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Minnehaha County Highway Project MC 1450-290-135, replacing structures 50-290-135 located on 483rd Avenue, approximately two and a half miles north and one mile east of Corson. DJ Boothey.
Morning Commissioners, DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This project we've had designed and sitting on the shelf, so to speak. We're looking at trying to get the notice going for advertising for bid letting, which we want to do on December 10th. It's been proven that letting these contracts throughout the winter and giving contractors time to look at them in their off-season has proven successful in getting us low bid prices. We anticipate the construction to occur during the summer of 2015, even though we're wanting to open bids December 10th, 2014. So here's a map that shows the general location. It's on a township road, north and a little bit east of Brandon. If you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Any questions for DJ? I'd look for a motion to authorize auditor to publish notice to bidders.
I do have one question, DJ.
Commissioner Kelly.
DOT's estimate is 40 cars per day. Is that what I'm reading this?
That is what's on paper, yes.
What does that mean?
The DOT as an entity doesn't actually make estimates for these roadways. What is actually done is during the bridge inspection process, the engineer that performs a bridge inspection makes estimates on the ADT of a particular roadway. We don't have traffic counts for this one, but knowing this area of the county, that is probably fairly close. And right now, during harvest, it probably, or a month or two ago during harvest, it was probably a little bit more than that. But during the wintertime, it will definitely be less than that. So on average, this is a fairly standard, if there's such thing as a standard gravel road, that ADT might be 40, 50, 60, but definitely less than 100.
This is not a real big prod, if I'm not mistaken.
No, no. It's a small structure that we're removing and actually replacing with culvert.
In the future, do you anticipate doing a radar or doing a traffic study with your new laser counter before bringing it to the console or vision?
We do have traffic counts on every one of our structure replacement projects. And because this one is a culvert replacement, a traffic study was not completed.
Thank you.
Any other questions for DJ regarding this? Look for a motion to authorize the county to publish notice.
That's my motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Peckus.
Yes.
Bennega.
I was gonna say, it might be easier to call, even FaceTime might be easier on the phone, too, because I don't think it'll drop.
Do we have a phone that we're going to use for that?
Where's the one we've used before?
I think that just goes to FaceTime.
Commissioner Bennega, we are looking for your vote on authorization for the county to publish notice on County Highway Project MC 1450-290-135.
Approved.
Barth.
Yes.
Hiebger. Yes. Motion passes five to zero.
Item B is to authorize a county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Minnehaha County Highway Project MC 14-16, consisting of grading, riprap, and miscellaneous repairs to drainage structures throughout Minnehaha County through the Emergency Response Program. DJ Boothey.
Commissioners, this project is in response to the June flooding that we had. And it's to repair approximately seven sites, about $75,000 worth of construction costs, 81.95 percent of which will be reimbursed through the state, through the ER program. And it's primarily grading and riprap. And if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Any questions for DJ? Seeing none, I...
I'll make the motion.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor, a roll call vote. Kelly.
Yes.
Peckus.
Yes.
Bennega.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Hiebger. Yes. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Peckus.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on, where's it, DPNO? There's a variety of numbers attached to this particular application. We have DPNO number 3687249129 and 65674. And the applicant currently is requesting the release of all the liens without any further payment. I'm sure you've all had an opportunity of reading the briefing memo as well as the supplement that was sent by the applicant, as well as from the state's attorney. After reviewing everything, you know, I am, I'm not going to make a motion on this particular case. The concerning part for me was that we don't know, although there's a completed application, we are unable to find out if this is actually an attempt to try to refinance or even purchase a home that was never followed up on. In the last paragraph of her submission, she's lost three sources of income. So if she is trying to purchase a home, she's lost her sources of income. I have way too many questions on this particular application, so I'm not going to make a motion. If somebody else wants to make a motion, please feel free.
Is there a motion on the table? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, in reviewing this person's file, I completely agree with Commissioner Peckus. But at the same time, I think that there is still some question about the status of all of this. And since we're still lacking info, I guess I would make a motion to defer action for two more weeks to try to get some more information. And if I get a second, I'll speak in support of that.
Is there a second to deferring this action for two weeks?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to defer action on this lien for two weeks.
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion. Commissioner Kelly.
I'd move to deny the application.
I have a motion to deny. Is there a second? Is there a second to deny? Motion dies for lack of a second. We're back to the original one. A motion to defer for two weeks. I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth has a comment.
You know, in looking at the submission, clearly the person has not lived a very healthy life and has convictions for drunken driving, et cetera. But she's also been a victim of sexual assault and she was even stabbed 16 times at one time by a significant other, has children, ex-husbands, et cetera. And I think we should try to find out some more info before we dismiss it out of hand.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? A roll call vote to defer for two weeks? Commissioners, Kelly.
No.
Peckus.
Yes.
Bennega.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Hiebger. Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Four to one, excuse me, I'm not getting that one right. He's gonna have to keep correcting me. Commissioner Peckus, a second. DPNO.
Yes, we have DPNO number 71459, in the amount of $2,856.07. In this particular request and application, it's actually made by the applicant's attorney, who actually apparently is involved in representing her in a related or unrelated accident injury. Apparently, the original lien is actually related to public defender, public advocate, and port relief services provided between 2009 and 2014. There was another additional charge that just got flagged in the amount of $252, which was actually incurred in Lincoln County. The application is related to related insurance settlement proceeds related to that automobile accident. And of course, part of the challenge in this particular circumstance is the fact that the liens and the amount that's actually been awarded by the insurance company won't cover the cost to the liens, as well as settling up the affairs related to the accident injury. Presently, she has been offered $10,000. If she accepts the offer and pays all fees and costs associated related to the outstanding county lien, she will actually owe more money than she receives, ironically. Amazingly, if she rejects the offer, there will be an opportunity, of course, where we may receive nothing in the future. So they could end up litigating something and not receiving anything in the potential lawsuit. So the attorney is actually stating that her financial situation is bleak, she is unemployed, she lives with relatives, and her sole source of income is child support payment, which is approximately $250 per month. Again, this application requests a release of the lien only as it applies to the proceeds of the settlement. In other words, the lien would continue to exist against this person if they ever get back on their feet. So once again, the attorney's working with the insurance company in the hopes of possibly getting more money. But at this point, the attorney is actually stepping away and says that he will not even receive any attorney's fees, just for the sole purpose of trying to resolve this matter for his client. So at this point, you know, what I'll do is I'll make a motion, I don't know if I'll get a second, to approve the application with the release of the lien only as it applies to the proceeds of the settlement. So the lien will still continue against the person.
Is there a second to that motion?
There is.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments? Commissioner Peckus.
This is one of those unique circumstances where we actually have several personal injury law firms. I know Wilka and Walter is one of the firms that frequently comes before the commission with identifying these sorts of claims. I know Alvin and King is also one that is stepping into letting the county know that these proceeds are available. Frequently, we never get notice from personal injury firms that actually are receiving proceeds and want to pay off the lien of the county. And so without their coming forward and at least including us as part of the process, we may or may not even know that these proceeds and these settlement offers are actually taking place in our community. So I do want to applaud these personal injury firms that have actually gotten us into the stream of communication, because until recently, we weren't even part of that communication.
Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly.
Well, you know, once again, these are basically public defender or public advocate liens. I'm not sure that it does us any good to have a lien if every time somebody comes in, even for an insurance settlement, we get nothing and they, we forgive the lien, what the purpose of the lien was in the first place, and I fail to see, but I will not support this.
Commissioner Peckus.
You know, the only other, the upside down to this, ironically, is that if we don't approve this lien and they go through the costs of having a trial to try to litigate this, it's gonna cost Minnehaha County close to $2,500, just in juror fees and getting geared up to do a jury trial. So ironically, we're gonna be paying again for a jury trial on a civil matter, as well as paying all the costs of what Mr. Kelly just described. So, you know, the bird in the hand is worth two in the bush.
Are there any other comments? My only comment would be, why are we not asking for 50%? Because at 50%, I think that she still has money in her pocket when it's done.
Ironically, I actually brought that up in the meeting that Robert and I had with them. And he said, even with 50%, it's still, she owes well over $2,000 in costs, still, even if we lowered it. So she's still upside down.
I have a motion and a second on the table to approve the DPNO 71459, to remove the lien only as it relates to the...
Proceeds.
The proceeds of the settlement. I have a motion and a second, be a roll call vote. Commissioner Kelly.
No.
Peckus.
Yes.
Bennega. Okay. He's there. Commissioner Bennega, can you hear us?
Nope.
Nope. He's gone.
Commissioner Barth.
Yes.
Hiebger. Yes. Motion passes three to one.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is a time when anybody can speak on a public issue that is not already on the agenda. Try to limit your time to five minutes. It needs to not be on the agenda. And state your name and your address, please.
Scott Erisman, 806 South 10th Avenue.
Erisman.
And I have a handout for Commissioners, too.
Robert can take care of that.
Thanks, Scott.
I am here today to share my interest in being appointed to the Minnehaha County Commission. Gerald Bennega said to me one time in a city council meeting that he wishes I was in his shoes while making the decision. And today, I'm asking to be in your shoes. A little brief history about me. I moved to Sioux Falls, South Dakota in early fall of 1991. I was enrolled at Southeast Technical Institute after graduating from Parkston High School. I studied graphic communications and printing production and have an associate degree of applied science from Southeast Tech. It was a great school then and even better today. And I consider it an asset to our community, state, and region. We are fortunate to have such an institution. I currently work as a printing estimator and national salesperson for a local printer and weekly newspaper. My focus is government printing for states and municipalities. It is a job that has given me a unique perspective on government spending and dispersing information to the electorate in a highly transparent way. I also work as a server in the hospitality industry. Both of my occupations are part-time, which gives me a flexible schedule to be involved in local politics and citizen activism. I have also worked as a plumber, carpenter, radio personality, a freelance graphic designer, an artist, a lead usher at a leading Sioux Falls entertainment facility, a telemarketer, a cook, a dishwasher, a busser, and a farmer. Hopefully, I haven't confused you with the governor. Growing up on a sheep and hog farm in Hutchinson County gave me a perspective far different than the current members of the county commission. Being involved in 4H and open class competitions while growing up in a rural setting has taught me the struggles and success of rural South Dakota. I understand the rural issues of Minnehaha County and the state. I lived them and experienced them, and they have guided me through my life. I also lived two years in a suburb of Seattle, my sophomore and junior years of high school, with my biological father, which gave me a broad perspective of big city living, crime, and diversity. I learned more about diversity in other cultures in those two short years than I have ever in my life. It taught me to treat every race and culture with an open mind and to always expect the best out of anyone, whether they are female, or male, or black or white. I am not like the current county commission members, nor would I ever pretend to be. I would bring an entirely different perspective to this board with my life experiences and my knowledge of local government. There's not one single person applying for this position that has the depth of knowledge I do about local government. I don't say this out of arrogance. My resume speaks for itself. I have not missed a recorded public meeting by the Sioux Falls City Council for almost 10 years. And I have watched every Minnehaha County Commission meeting over the past year. I have a passion for local governing. As I tell people frequently, all politics are local, and the greatest change can be made in these chambers, not in the halls of Congress in Washington. I know you have concerns. I maintain a controversial website about local government. It is my child. Its premise is simple, to inform and entertain through political satire and activism. I often tell people, if you can't laugh at politicians, you will only end up hating them. I am not a hater. I often try to use the blog as a catalyst for change and activism. Sometimes it achieves those goals, sometimes it falls on its face. It has given me a very thick skin. But it also has made me aware of the public sensitivities. If appointed to the commission, I would stop the blog or pass on the reins to another author. I hate conflicts of interest with public officials, and I would find it necessary to eliminate them by ending my authorship. I believe it is difficult to stop all conflicts of interest by a public official, but also believe we have clear choices. And like other candidates, unlike other candidates applying for this position, I would choose to eliminate as many conflicts as possible. I have also spent hundreds of hours donating my artistic and graphic design talents to local charities, nonprofits, musicians, and artists. In fact, Dick Kelly's son, John, was in a movie I made once. He's an excellent musician. And have been involved with several art groups in the region. I have also dedicated thousands of hours of my own time being a citizen advocate in this community and county. I don't believe I need to belong to a club or a fraternal organization to prove my involvement within these government boundaries and community. My blog speaks for itself. I wouldn't edit any of it. What would be my priorities if I served on this commission? They would be simple and straightforward. I've been a registered independent for over 10 years and strongly believe in nonpartisanship. I think all political parties offer good and bad solutions, and I prefer to look at the best solutions. I don't care where they come from. While I would consider myself a progressive on social issues, I wouldn't deny I'm a prudent and fiscal conservative. So what would I want to focus on for my tenure on the commission? First priority would be TIFs. I think the commission has a legal and justifiable right to either approve or deny TIFs that the city of Sioux Falls proposes. I would make it a top priority to make this change in our state legislature. Consistent elections. As a good friend said to me, "Elections and ballots are sacred in a democracy." I agree 100%. I think there needs to be a concerted effort between the county, the city of Sioux Falls, and the school district to make election precincts identical. I would champion this cause on the commission. A more progressive and prudent approach to law enforcement. I would push for shorter sentences and more rehabilitation. I would also work with the city of Sioux Falls to encourage less arrests and focus more on resolution in the field. I would also like to combat overcrowding at our jails. Not only would it reduce the number of reoffenders, it would save citizens' tax dollars. Engage our rural communities more in Minnehaha County. While our county government seems to be focused on Sioux Falls, our rural communities matter. I would put a refocus on them and bring them to the table. Promote logical development planning. There seems to be this disconnect between the city of Sioux Falls, the county, and the rural areas. We need to get on the same page. We should face the facts. Zoning isn't forever, and we need to be honest and transparent with the constituents of this county. Funding. Let's face it, the county is getting the shaft on tax funding. So what can we do? We have options, but we must be creative. The same old proposals are just not going to fly and peer changes about as much as the Queen of England's hair. We must find a way within this commission's legislative body to make those funding changes on our own, and we must also look at ways to be extremely prudent while maintaining services and paying a fair wage to our public employees. I believe this is the biggest challenge of the current commission, and I'd love to dig my heels in deep to solve it with a long-term funding plan instead of an opt-out. I won't lie to you, I believe strongly in citizens-first government. The majority should always rule within the constraints of law while protecting the opinions of the minority. I don't want this job for money. I want it to represent the public fairly, while I may be easily tempted by peanut butter M&amp;M's and an Arnold Palmer on a hot day. I reject any temptation from special interests. I would do this job to serve the people, not the man. Thank you. And I left my phone number and email if you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Erismann. This will be a subject we'll be taking up next week as to how we're moving forward.
Okay.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Yes.
I would just comment that, you know, we've all been contacted, I believe, by a number of people that are interested in this job, and I appreciate Scott coming forward and giving us a pretty good resume here, and I, I think it wouldn't hurt if other candidates were to do the same thing. I mean, it's one thing to nibble around the edges, it's another thing to take a bite.
I think that's what the discussion will, um, focus around next week when we discuss this. Commissioner Pecus has not resigned at this point, so.
The clock's ticking.
I don't think there's much question.
See you at the cemetery at the funeral.
Anyone else that would like to speak to public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to regular agenda. Regular business. Item number 11 is consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit 14-48 to allow a daytime dog training facility under the property legally described as Lot 1, Track 3, Skyburg's Edition, in the southeast quarter of Section 14, Township 101 North, Range 48 West in Split Rock Township. David Heinold. Good morning, David.
Morning, Commissioners. David Heinold, Planning Department. Received an appeal from Rocky Luesbrook, who lives at 26493. As soon as I bring up the map here in a second. So here's the subject property that's located about three and a half miles southeast of Brandon, right along 265th Street. Rocky Luesbrook appealed the decision. He lives just to the northeast of here, um, on, "To allow the daytime dog training facility." Copy of the appeal letter. Minutes from the October 27th Planning Commission. Staff report, site plan narrative, and location map are included for review. Petitioner also submitted some pictures showing the view from the property to the southwest of the, the proposed training facility, and also a letter addressing some of the concerns of neighbors, which, um, those have also been included. The Planning Commission voted four to one to approve CUP 1448 with a, a change in condition number two, that the hours of operation shall be from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM on weekdays, noon to 8:00 PM on Saturdays, and no Sundays. Just a, a short, little brief introduction as far as the, the project. Um, I won't go into too much depth as far as, this is the, the proposed site plan shows that there's a dock in the vicinity that's just north of an existing accessory building that, um, that would be a 40-foot by 60-foot, um, a non-slip outdoor carpet with a four-foot wide ramp to help the dogs out of a four-foot deep pool, which would be located to the west of that dock. Um, it's a 33-foot by 18-foot above-ground pool. The site plan also indicated a future fenced-in area for holding dogs, as the petitioner stated. There's a parking area that's just off 265th to the north that's down by the house, just off the driveway, that can accommodate roughly six cars. Petitioner stated that there would be a maximum of six people there, um, during the week. The flight dog training facility will be open from April through September. The majority of, uh, the sessions will be held on Thursdays. As far as just introduction classes and, um, advanced classes would also be on Thursdays in just the month of July. Both of these sessions would be limited to six dogs. Again, there'd be, add a maximum of six cars there. On October 15th, staff met with the petitioner at the subject property and determined that the proposed use will be an appropriate accessory use to the residential lot. Just some of the criteria that we go through in determining, um, planning submittals is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. The addition of a dock above-ground pool and fenced-in area for holding should not have a significant impact on the use and enjoyment of other property, nor on property values in the immediate vicinity. That the effect upon normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. The general area is primarily agricultural with few acreages in the immediate vicinity. The proposed additions to the property should not negatively affect the normal and orderly development of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. The utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. Access will be provided, as I mentioned, off of the petitioner's driveway, or, um, the property owner's driveway. Um, no further infrastructure will need to be provided. That off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The petitioner plans to utilize the area off the, off 265th Street. That measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. No offensive nuisance, nuisances shall be permitted at any time dur, during use of the proposed accessory structure. The dogs will be kept under close supervision by the owners. They are expected to assume full responsibility for their pets and children. The use of lighting should be directed downward onto the property in order to prevent light pollution off-site. So recommendations, staff found the proposed flight dogs training dock and pool is an adequate accessory use to this residential lot. Staff recommended approval of conditional use permit 1448 with the following conditions: One, that the conditional use permit 14-48 shall permit a daytime dog training facility. That the hours of operation are changed, as I mentioned, to, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM on weekdays, noon to 8:00 PM on Saturdays, and no Sundays. That the proposed, proposed use shall, shall adhere to the submitted site plan dated 9/25/2014. All waste shall be disposed of in conformance with the solid waste ordinance. That all lighting shall be of a full-cut, fully-shielded design, directed downward to prevent light pollution off of the property. That six parking spaces be provided in conformance with Article 15, and parking shall not be permitted on 265th Street at any time. That a building permit is required for the training dock and above-ground pool, and that a building inspection is required prior to commencement of operations. And if you have any questions, the petitioner and opposition here's notice was sent out to everybody who spoke at the last planning commission. I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for David this morning? Okay.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Yep.
So on that first, uh, black and white slide, uh, where does the petitioner live and where do the proponents live?
The petitioner actually lives in the city of Brandon. This is the property owner who, I think-
Okay, so that house belongs to the property owner?
That's not their house.
And that's the only house on this picture?
That's not the only house. There's a house right here.
Okay.
And if I go back to the location map, this shows a full zoomed-out version. There is, as I mentioned, Rocky Luesbrook. He lives to the northeast, right over here, and there's a couple other houses to the west.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for David? Okay. Seeing none. This is a public hearing, so we could hear from the proponents at this time if they would like to speak, those in favor of the dog run, of the dog pool. If you'd identify your name and your address, please. Thank you.
I'm Ryan Jordan. I live at 1417 Creek Central in Brandon. The, um, the owners-
Could you make sure you're speaking into the microphone? Thank you.
Sorry. The owners of this, uh, of this land are, is my parents' lot, my wife's, uh, parents'. So, I just have a little write-up I'd like to, uh, share. Flight dogs is a dock diving training location. Dock diving is a dog sport and uses a privately-owned dock and pool for training. The dock and pool is owned by Angelie and Ryan Jordan and is located on Orin and Darla Paulson's land, which is Angelie's parents' home where she grew up. Dock diving is a hobby the Paulson family enjoy together and will use their pool and dock for their private use and personal training. The business portion is to share the training equipment for those in the local, um, dock diving club. Um, our outdoor 40-foot by 6-foot dock by 33, and with a 33 by 18-foot by 4-foot deep above-ground pool, uh, the dock will be built to code, and the ramp will be used for dog safety to get out. Uh, there'll also be a locked gate, uh, to prevent access for the dock for safety. Flight dogs seasonal open five months a year. Um, he said April worth looking at, uh, May to September. Uh, business consists of three classes per year at practice time for, uh, club members. Uh, there would be a limited number of members a year that can use the dock during open times, and a limit to six dogs per day. We're looking at, uh, Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 5:00 to 9:00, and Saturday, 12:00 to 8:00 PM. These are open dock times and gives members flexibility, not suggesting the dogs will be there the whole time during these hours. Uh, we have classes, but proposing three classes, four-week-long classes, one day a week, Tuesdays, total of 12 days out of the year, that is just for an hour and a half. Dogs, uh, may get excited during these classes, but excessive barking that is considered unreasonable will not happen. We'll, we'll ask them to, uh, control their dogs and relieve. How we took in consideration for concerns of neighbors, uh, limited time from opening, six months out of the year, it's only five months. Uh, limited open dock times from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, which was original, to only 5:00 to 9:00, four hours. Limited seven days a week to five days a week with Sundays off, and Thursday only used as a makeup day if there is bad weather on Tuesdays. Um, we also have images of the dock. The dock will be, it is constructed to code, and I have some, uh, some images, the neighbors to the west and neighbors, uh, to the northeast. There's the images, neighbors to the west. That's right by our dock. Here's the dock here. And you can see up in the top part of there, that's, um, Luesbrook's property. Here's a view from the, uh, property line from the west looking east. Here's a view from the east looking west. Yeah, that is, that must be it. Let's see. Uh, we have some rules. Uh, we're, we're trying to compose a very organized, uh, we don't want anything out of control. I don't want to deal with the chaos myself, and also to reduce the noise and dog-to-dog interaction. Limited dogs, six dogs for each class in open dock training. Our considerations are not unreasonable and warranted or unlawful use of the property. We have compiled, or complied with all the stipulations the court has given us. We hope to see your thoughtful compliance and how we could work to make both parties happy. Um, we also received a letter from Rocky Luesbrook that was more of a personal attack, not related to anything, brought him to court and hoped to keep the peace and not be harassed. The rules we have for safety, dogs must be under control at all times or asked to leave. Dogs must be on a leash or in a crate at all times unless working on the dock. Dogs that show aggression will be asked to be muzzled or leave. Dogs that are at least six months old, dogs must be at least six months old, and handlers must be 16 years old unless with a parent. Uh, we clean up after the dog. Uh, we make sure that they're taken out to his restroom. We have cleanup processes too. Uh, unless authorized by a flight dog trainer, myself, or Angelie, uh, only one dog at a, on a, on the dock at a time. Unless authorized by a flight dog trainer, no humans in the pool. No abuse of their dog or punishment or pushing of the dogs off the dock is tolerated. Dogs must have their nails clipped and groomed. Owners assume full responsibility for the dogs and, and its behavior while on the property of flight dogs, uh, training pool and dock, including the dogs' interaction with other dogs. And then, uh, we ask that they please attend to all their dogs at all times. Do not let them loose, and children must be in apparent control at all times and not allow it in the pool. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Jordan? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Pecus?
Mr. Jordan, uh, you know, flight dogs, I, I remember reading something about it in the Argus Leader, at least something at the fair. Were you involved with, uh, some of those, uh, flight dog activities out there?
At the fair?
Yeah.
Uh, no, but I don't watch it there, and it's very similar to that.
Okay.
We won't be having dogs doing backflips for frisbee.
I'd be happy if they just fetched a duck, so, okay. All right.
But it's, it's very similar to that, and, um, I think what you saw at the fair, it was a very, um, I don't know how to say it, but it was kind of, um, temporary, a structure, and I think it was a huge scaffolding for-
Sure.
So they didn't allow, we, we, we asked to talk with them, and they're, they're good people. We asked if we could see their, what they had for a facility for ideas.
Sure.
They didn't really allow anybody up on there unless it's very, so, but, uh, the structure I built is very, very solid.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jordan? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Is there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Get up and identify yourself, your name and your address, please.
I am Rocky Luesbrook.
Speak in the microphone, please.
Rocky Luesbrook. Uh, I, I am the one that appealed it, uh, not just for myself, but-
You give your address, too, please, just for the record.
As they pointed out, I do have a buffer between me and them. Barb Jurgens is not so fortunate. She's within 100 feet of what's going on here. That remark about my letter, uh, if you'd like to see my letter here, it, I mean, if that's a personal attack, I, I, I can't imagine where he's coming with that. You can look at this letter if you want. I'm pretty, pretty discouraged with that. On his website, it's, there's a lot of things on here that are contradictory to what he's He already built the deck. He's supposed to have a permit for that. He didn't get one. He's asking for, uh, people to join his club and rent the facility. Okay? On his website, he has, uh, "We already have three events planned for next year and are hoping to do a benefit event also." This, this doesn't sound like dog training to me. It sounds like having events there where there's a numerous amount of people there. Now they're saying six dogs. I never heard that come up before. Before, it was just six cars. Well, you can park on the neighbor's property if you get permission. You can shuttle people. I mean, you know, the whole issue here is barking dogs. Okay? We have a right to quiet enjoyment of our property. They don't have a right to, to have this conditional use permit. They're asking to run a business in a rural property. I mean, they have no right to, to this if it's going to affect us, and obviously, barking dogs affect everybody within sound distance, which is what, half-mile, maybe more? I, I think what he's going after here, he has sponsors to help pay for this thing. I mean, this isn't dog training. This is some kind of an event thing going on here, and it just doesn't belong on a rural property. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lewisbrook? Just, yeah, just a minute. Are there any questions? Seeing none from the commission? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any rebuttals from the proponents? You have to come up to the microphone. Are there any other opponents that would like to speak first? Don't see any, so...
Oh, yeah.
Opponent, yep, you can come up and speak. You have to give your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Barb Jurgens. I live right next to them. My address is four-eight-two-five-eight, two-hundred-and-sixty-fifth Street. So, I have, my sister and I are property owners, and she had a diabetic doctor appointment. She couldn't make it, but she did give me, you know, her views here. If I could read those, and then we can, I can say something else. What she has written here is, "First of all, we're wondering, are we zoned agriculture or business? Do we have to have a..." We're all zoned agriculture, so, you know, if they get a business permit, do we have to, you know, does something have to be rezoned? We like our agriculture, because I have animals, I have horses, and so we don't want to lose our agriculture standing. We have horses on our property, do not want to pay higher taxes. We live in the country so that we could have privacy and a little quiet for ourselves and our family. We really do not want twenty more people a hundred-and-twenty feet. And if you look, these pictures show where I live. I live, I live probably, I'm going to be a stone's throw away from this swimming pool or whatever. My barn is right there, kind of the edge of our property, so it's probably twenty, around about a hundred feet, maybe even, you know? So, so we're afraid that that's going to kind of, it's going to be, you know, noise, shouting. We don't want the noise of shouting and whistles and dogs barking right on our doorstep. Angie and Ryan are really nice people. They, you know, but, but they don't even own the property, and we'd have no recourse. Would we if they would get this business permit? What recourse, you know, do we have? If they want to have this for their own use, is what I thought it started to be, you know, having their friends come and practice and, you know, that'd be one thing, but now they're asking for a business permit, and if they get that, what recourse do we have then? You know, we can't complain or, or whatever about it then. And then, as my sister writes, she said, "I've never heard of anyone starting a business who did not want to grow." So, Angie and Ryan are currently, they only intend to have a single ramp and pool, but what's to prevent them from eventually... Where, you know, what to prevent them from growing, of course, if they don't grow their business? So, then there'll be more. And they, and as Rocky kind of had said, there'll probably only be six cars, but how many dogs in a car? Or, you know, the traffic going by my place? I have grandchildren out a lot. I have one dog, and I know she'll probably be barking a lot, too. If they're, they're over there making noise, she's going to be barking. But they're good neighbors. We've been together there for about eight years or so, and we try to all get along, but it's just like, we're just so close to it that I just, if this gets started, what stops them from growing and infringing on the neighborhood? If they get approved, what limits then? Then we can't really do anything. The rant, none, my sister wrote this, "The ramp faces my bedroom windows, and I lose my privacy every weekend, and as they're saying, three days a week now, two." So, we have, my sister's rooms are up on top, and she has the, we have all windows in our house, and so we'd have to keep our windows, our blinds shut all the time because they're, they'll be able to look right up, but they're just, they'd be so close to us. So, so I guess, I don't know. It's, that's also my views. They're good kids, and I know they're responsible, but is a business really what we need right next door? When I'm next door, the neighbor's right across the road, and they're here, they'll probably speak, but they, we don't want a business there. I just don't think, we moved, we moved out of the country, you know, to have quiet evenings, and now we're going to have traffic, we're going to have dogs, we're going to have... And they have, like, three of their own dogs, so does that mean their dogs and then six additional dogs or six additional cars? So, you know, I mean, I don't wish them any ill will, but we're just thinking that it just isn't a proper place. I'd be a stone's throw away from my barn, and that's what I, that's where I'm at most of the time with the horses and everything, so. Might affect maybe our ability to resale property taxes, is somebody going to, I have no, you know, we have no plans of selling, but is it going to? Would people want to buy the property if they have this facility right next door? It might affect. So, so we're just wondering, you know, do we have any recourse if they get this? Do, well, you know, don't have any. So, I know Rocky lives a little bit to the north of us, but sound does carry. I can sit out in my patio, and I can hear people talking or barking dogs, so on a quiet night, it is, you know, that's why we would like our, our country home to be quiet, so. Any, any question like where I live?
Are there any questions for Mrs. Jordan? Commissioner Barth?
Was your home in the black and white photo that we looked at earlier?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to find out.
Yes.
Thank you.
It is.
David, could you use the pointer to show where she is?
I was in there a couple, three weeks ago and had a, had a, what do you call it, a variance or an additional use permit to add on to my barn, which was approved, but...
No, where is her?
Where, where does she live at?
Is that black and white photo, show it?
Right next to the van.
Right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where's the, the house is there, and the barn is near us?
That's our house, and down right there is my barn, and that's where I'm, you know, I mean, that's where I do there a lot because I have my horses.
Okay.
And so we do, so it's only like, it'd probably only be a stone's throw away.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Jurgens?
Ms. Jurgens, so do you share the driveway, then?
With them?
Do you, yes.
No.
Okay.
We have our own separate driveways, but it's...
Okay. It's not clear from this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Jurgens? Okay. Seeing none. Are there any other opponents that would like to speak? Any other one against this? You can sit down. You can sit down.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Speak again from the proponents. If you have anything that you would like to address, you've come back up and identify yourself, please.
My name is Angela Jordan. I live fourteen-seventeen Creek Side Circle. I'm the one who, with my husband Ryan Jordan, that's running Flight Dogs. I just want to clarify some things. I, I don't have a web page, but I do have a Facebook page, and way before we actually went and talked about this to the court before, we were thinking about having events and that type of thing, so he is true about that, but after deciding about just having this being a smaller thing, six dogs, that is not possible. So, events and growth will not happen. Flight Dogs is more of a hobby for me. We built this mainly because I'm into competition. So's my dad, who owns the property, and we wanted a place to practice. And I have maybe about eight to ten friends that are really into, to, and it's mainly just going to be us. The reason that I'm trying to get it to be a business is because I was going to charge them some money to help pay for it because it is costing me a lot of money. I'm trying to have it be as legal as possible, so if they're paying me, I got to pay taxes. For me to pay taxes, I got to have business licenses. So, really, is this, I mean, I have a job, and my husband has a job. This is not, I don't want this to be a business, and even though I do have it open, I think it's five days a week, I bet you that maybe two days a week, people will be out there. I mean, I can't say that, but, and no, I don't want this to grow. I really don't. For, you know, a few things, I don't want people out there that I don't know, you know, then you can get into people who may sue you, and I don't want to get into that kind of stuff. I'm just trying to make this as legalized as possible. And I guess if the business part doesn't go through, we'll probably, I mean, I believe we still have a right to use the dock and pool, so.
Did you have a permit for your dock?
Yeah. We do have a permit.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Jordan? Okay. Thank you.
I did want to say one more thing, if that's okay.
Yeah.
We did hold a, a small class for some friends at Lake Brandon, and they had, it was just like, just to see if how many people would be interested. We didn't charge anything, just kind of a fun thing with a few of my friends, and people were right next door. Like here, like Lewisbrook, he's quite a ways from here. And then I know Jurgens is a little bit closer, but it's not, I mean, it's not right in her backyard. And we didn't have any complaints. The dogs rarely bark. They may bark for a second while we get them excited, and then we let them go, and they jump off the dock, and so we keep it very organized. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Just some clarification. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I bring it back to the commission for consideration.
Could I ask Ryan, I guess I'm still a little confused as to where the opponents live.
David, would you come back up to the podium, please, and point out to Commissioner Kelly where people live at? Maybe use the other one.
I think the other map is better.
This map, this map doesn't show Rocky Lewisbrook's property.
Okay.
Probably, his property's right here.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Would you speak in the mic, please?
Rocky Lewisbrook's property is right here.
Okay.
That's correct. And Jurgens' property is right next door to the west, to this red outlined property, which is the subject property.
And could you address the agricultural zoning versus home businesses, please?
The agricultural zoning do allow home occupations as an accessory use to the permitted use as a residential lot. So, as far as this use, you could add additional conditions as far as addressing the number of events, if you can have them properly, having no events at all. I guess I just wanted to add on that. And then just on the barking dogs issue, that's something that would definitely need to be addressed delicately.
If this was passed, the way that the neighbors could be, have concerns would be to watch what has been in the ordinance, because there are rules in the ordinance, and they have to comply with the ordinance, so they do have recourse if they are breaking their ordinances.
There are disturbance of peace. There's a disturbance of peace. If there's a disturbance of peace, they can call in and complain about, they can go out and enforce it, or send somebody out and follow up on that.
Okay. Are there any other questions for David? Are there questions for the opponents or proponents from the commission? I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit from the planning commission without any change.
I have a motion to approve permit from the planning...
I'll second that with a comment.
With a second? Comment from Commissioner Barth?
You know, I really appreciate the fact that everybody is getting along as well as they can on this, and I expect that if there are any problems that, working together, we can resolve them. I can say that in the past, we've had issues where when one person was denied, they then, using agriculture, brought in mammoth donkeys, which braid all day and night, and we obviously aren't going to have that happen. In the meantime, though, I think these, small businesses that begin at home, they act as sort of a business incubator. Then when they get bigger, they move to a place that's, I think this is more of a hobby than a, you know, I actually had not ever heard of flying dogs before this issue came up, and, you know, as a Viking fan, I'm looking forward to training pigs to fly. But I, I will support this project going forward, and I hope we all work together to make sure we don't cause extra irritation to each other.
I have a motion and a second to approve the decision from the planning commission to approve the dog, daytime dog training facility. Any other questions or comments? I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Barth, Benega online.
Commissioner Benega, are you online at this point?
I am.
Okay. We'll have a roll call.
I was waiting for Jeff's pigs to fly.
You're not going to be able to see him today. Okay. I have a roll call vote. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Pecas?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Heiberg?
Yes.
Motion post passes five to zero. Done. Thank you. Thank you. The next item, item twelve, is to consider a motion to authorize the chairman, auditor, and emergency management director to enter into an agreement with the state of South Dakota Office of Homeland Security to receive equipment and training in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Lynn DeYoung.
Commissioners, Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. As you know, we have applied and received grant dollars from the Homeland Security Grant Program for the last many years. On a yearly basis, the grant comes in, and we apply for those equipment and training needs. In 2014, we were awarded the dollars listed in your memo, twenty-two thousand for training, software in the amount of seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents, and then radios for both the sheriff's office and the police department in the amount of ninety-eight thousand-five-thirty-three-twenty-four. The documentation's included within your packet, and I'm requesting the commission to authorize the chairperson, the auditor, and myself to enter into this agreement with the state of South Dakota.
Are there any questions for Lynn? Is there a motion?
Move to proof.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman, the auditor, and emergency management director to enter into an agreement with the Homeland Security to receive training monies. All those in favor? With a roll call vote. Kelly?
Yes.
Pecas?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Heiberg?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is consider a motion authorizing the chairman, auditor, and emergency management director to enter into an agreement with the South Dakota Department of Health for Minnehaha County to conduct fatality management training and be reimbursed in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Lynn DeYoung.
Commissioners, as you know, the coroner and myself have been working on a mass fatality plan and response protocol for Minnehaha County. We've also been coordinating training, not only in Minnehaha County, but across the state of South Dakota. We've currently completed training in Minnehaha County, Pennington County, Brown County, and have training scheduled in Hughes County, and probably additional training based on the number of participants we've had. So, the Department of Health has awarded us ten thousand dollars to continue this training to pay for the costs associated with the contractor and the other items. So, attached is the documents for the grant, and then once again, I'm requesting the chairperson, or the commission to authorize the chairperson, the auditor, and myself to enter into the reimbursement agreement for the training as attached.
Okay. Are there any questions for Lynn on this? And the for motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to, and the auditor and the emergency manager and director to enter an agreement with the Department of Health for training money. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Pecas?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Heiberg?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Item fourteen is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 Police Service Agreements between Minnehaha County and the cities of Baltix, Colton, Crooks, Del Rapids, Garrettson, Hartford, Humboldt, and Valley Springs. Kristin Trannan.
Hi, Kristin. Good morning. I bring to you the eight annual contracts that we enter into with the, with the small towns in the county. There is one change to the Garrettson contract from last year. Last year, they would have had 55 hours and this year, they've requested 43 hours due to budgetary constraints, not any issue that they have with the services they've been providing. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We did increase the rate due to, I use our budget mounts regarding fuel and personnel expenses to determine how we would adjust the rates as needed. And it did go up to $31.90, $31.90 per hour. Last year was $30.30 per hour.
Any questions for Kristin? Look for a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the signing of the 2015 Police Services Agreement. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Pecos?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 15 is a discussion of commission expectations for election review process. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the County Commission Office. As all of you are very aware, and probably everybody in this room is very aware, that soon after election night, a number of you wanted to and reached out to work with Auditor Bob Litz in some way to address some of the concerns and challenges that presented themselves on election night with counting ballots. We've scheduled this as a discussion today because to this point, we've heard a lot of different ideas of how that review process might unfold and how you might go about doing that. So the purpose today is to really give you the chance to have the discussion, to narrow that focus on a process and decide how you want to go about looking at that, at addressing some of the concerns and setting some parameters for that review. Now, I know that Commissioner Barth has indicated he had some questions and I would understand that that may be part of your discussion of deciding where you want to address the particular questions, if you want to do that now, or if you want to set parameters for this discussion and the review, the review of what took place, and then answer that at a, as part of that process. So I would, unless you have more questions for me, I would, again, since this is a discussion item today, would turn it over to a commission discussion. And what we in the office would expect is that we would get some direction from the commission today and then based on that discussion, we would bring forward an actionable item for you on an agenda, future agenda, presumably next week of a, for you to take action on how you would actually proceed with the review. So at that, I would turn it over to the commission for discussion unless there are any particular questions for me.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? Commissioner Barth has brought forward a bunch of questions to the commission. I guess I'd like to see an independent review to address issues and concerns that have been reported to us. I think we all know that we had some problems during our election, but this is a time for us to discuss how we want to move forward with the process. Do we want to appoint an independent review board? Do we want to take suggestions from, or people who just want to call into the office and ask to be put on it? Do we want to limit the number? What type of people do we want? Do we want staff? Do we want outside? And so this is a time to bring forward your suggestions. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, one person I'd like to see involved in this is Chantel Krebs. I think the state is intimately involved with this whole process and I think, I'm sure Chantel has researched this whole thing because we're not the only county that had some difficulties. And so I would like to see her as a part of that discussion. I really think we need, we need some citizen representation, but we also need some expert, we need some people that understand the process, be it, you know, from the auditor's office or wherever.
Commissioner Barth?
I guess I would say I think that Chantel is certainly a good person to have on that board. But I would like to say that I am a little disappointed that on November 7th, when we did the canvas, I suggested that we record the meeting. We did not. The minutes didn't reflect that we had any discussion. We did have some discussion and, but I was told that we weren't going to do it then, we would do it the next week. The next week, it was not on the agenda. Now, it's not on the agenda either. And I guess apparently there is no plan to have that discussion that I tried to initiate on the 7th. But I think that going forward with the panel is certainly a reasonable thing to do and, you know, I think that we should look for some folks to be on there.
Commissioner Barth, just to respond to that, if you want to lay blame for it not being on Tuesday's agenda last week, that was my fault since the meeting happened on Friday. It had to be in by Friday afternoon and I evidently did not verbalize clearly to the staff that's what we wanted. So you can lay blame with me on that one. That's why it was brought up under old business last week and that's why it was put on the agenda for this week. It is on the agenda and we are moving forward.
If I may, it's not on the agenda. We're talking about a panel. We're not talking about the election. So we've already moved away from a more intimate discussion of what occurred on election day. But I understand your point. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other suggestions for the discussion review process?
Well, if I may, Madam Chair, I think that it probably should be an independent review. You know, this is another circumstance where we have a wonderful opportunity in the past to try to correct some challenges in previous elections, which didn't necessarily occur here in South Dakota. But, you know, there's a reason why we have HAVA, you know, Help America Vote Act passed in DC with the idea that will enable us all to go ahead and cast our ballots more easily and favorably because of some of the challenges we had, going all the way back to the Bush v Gore election back in the year 2000. And amazingly, here we are today where you're going to see the conservatism in me come out, but we had a process with precincts that quite honestly worked just fine. But some of the problems that we had is reform, going to huge voting centers, which I know a lot of people were advocates of, created a lot of confusion in the voting process. And we've had those discussions here at this table before. And I know that our local partners in government, whether they be the city or the school district, they've actually, you know, gone to the large voting centers. And I can honestly tell you that we've seen problems with those elections. You know, when you have people checking in to vote, whether they're using e-poll books or not, and they turn around and they say, okay, you're in this particular area for the city election, and they turn behind them and they see 18 different ballots that they have to pull the ballots out of, that particular correct pile. And I can honestly tell you that we've all heard the complaints from people saying, some guy just grabbed a stack of ballots and went and handed them to them and they don't know if it was the correct ballots or not. That's a problem. That's a problem. Not in the noble effort of having community vote centers, but it's in the practical application of how do we get the correct ballots into the hands of the right people at the time to vote? Those are some of the challenges that we have with this type of reform. And once again, in this last election, same thing occurred, getting the correct ballots into the people's hands so they can vote at the, at the time with the right ballot at the correct voting place. And, you know, some of our concerns going back to the last city election went into the fact that we have legislative districts that straddle both Minnehaha County and Lincoln County. I've never heard a good response from anybody advocating for the community centers for voting that adequately addresses those particular challenges. Because Lincoln County, they have precincts. If Minnehaha County adopted community voting centers, you could have a person that thinks they live in Sioux Falls, south of 57th Street, they go work in Baltic, they can run into any place in Baltic to do their vote, and they will not be allowed to vote because they live south of 57th Street. And so that has not been resolved. There's been no communication that actually addresses that. And so that's going to be a challenge in the future. And what happened last election cycle, we had people showing up at some precincts saying just what Jeff brought up a long time ago. I thought I could vote anywhere. You know, if you send a mixed message out there, if you can vote anywhere and you don't know where anywhere is, then you can't vote. You don't get the opportunity to vote, you're disenfranchised. So, you know, these are noble endeavors to try to expand the opportunity of people to vote. Now you can absentee vote six weeks prior to a general election or primary, which is wonderful. It opens up opportunities. We've had a huge increase in the number of absentee ballots that we have to count. But amazingly, what happens? You set that down on the counter and before you know it, somebody's putting their coffee on it, somebody's putting their mac and cheese on it. This has become a placemat, a birdcage, and you pull it out and now you have to vote with it. And we get surprised because, guess what? Our computer systems will flag those ballots if they don't come through because of the discrepancies that are picked up by the scanner. So I think it's a noble effort, but I think we have to go back to what worked in the past. And I think an independent review is necessary, getting back to my original statement, because I think we need not only our Secretary of State or recently elected Secretary of State, she needs to have her hand in the process. I think we need to have our auditor also in that process. And I think we need independent people in our community to go ahead and to make these kind of suggestions to all the different local entities of government. I think it'll have a better reception. And, you know, if they want to have people involved in this process as well, great, but I think they also need to understand that, you know, voting centers may be cheaper, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to get a better result. And I think the goal is to have the best result we can get, not cheaper. And so that's just my two bets on it.
Commissioner Kelly?
Unless Gerald has a comment, I'd like to float a motion.
We can't have a motion. This is a discussion only.
We cannot.
No, this is a discussion only. Commissioner Benega, do you have any comments?
Unfortunately, I didn't hear all of that. I'm getting some background noise, but I agree that the process is more important than the question of speed. We want accuracy and we want independence. So I think the information that John has just presented is part of the process, but we need to go to the experts, not only with the people who are responsible for the process, but also to the vendor who is responsible in providing a product that works and we are trained adequately to make sure that that process does work. So I think we've got multiple issues on the board and I think they need to be done independently as John suggested. And I think we need to do it as quickly as possible, but not necessarily as fast as some people need it done. We've got some time to reflect and make sure that that process is correct and I think we need to do that as quickly as possible to get that process moving and hope for a result that everybody can agree on will avoid the majority of the problems. I don't know that we'll ever have a perfect system with multiple precincts, multiple counties, multiple cities, multiple school districts, and hope to have no issues. I think that's not going to be possible.
Commissioner Kelly?
Okay, I'd like to try floating a suggestion.
You can float a suggestion.
That the chair appoint a blue ribbon panel with the consent of the commission to look at this. We, you know, we do have a timeframe, although the school board election, I think there will be a school board election this year because of the start date petition. But we've gotten till, you know, we've got some time to look at this. And I think a good panel, and I think it was within the chair's prerogative to appoint that panel, would get this ball, would get this thing rolling.
Do you have any suggestions on how many people we should limit this panel to? I mean, we don't want to put 200 people on this group.
I would put seven on it.
Seven people on the panel? Are there any other suggestions?
I'm not sure any elected official should be on it. I think, you know, we will obviously, as will the auditor, have an interest in it, but I, I think it's important that we get some experts in the field.
Okay. Are there any other suggestions, Commissioner?
I wonder if we couldn't have Chantel plus Auditor Litz plus one from each of us.
Does the commission feel about having one commissioner sit on this board?
Well, I'm sorry.
No, that's not what you meant?
No, I meant I would nominate someone and Commissioner Kelly would nominate one. And then we'd have Secretary of State-elect Krebs and our own auditor on the panel.
Okay. I still didn't quite understand what you meant.
Okay, well, it would be, let's say that I wanted to have Pete Harriman be on the panel and that would be my nominee. And then, you know, John would maybe pick, you know, Pam Nelson or something. I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Just, so there'd be five that we would pick and two that would be kind of automatically in there, our auditor and our Secretary of State-elect.
Commissioner Kelly?
I would just suggest maybe that instead of the auditor and the Secretary of State, that they, they have a nominee. One, I don't know that Chantel's going to have the time to, you know, to be on a panel. She's going to have plenty of work to do when she gets up there. Two, I think this is, you know, advisory to us and hopefully to the auditor. So I would say in the absence of any commissioners on it, I would, I would think the auditor maybe should have someone on there that they appoint, but probably from the community. It's my thought.
Commissioner Pecos?
We have a, we have a past established precedent where we've done this before. I think the County Efficiency Committee that we had originally, you were the designee for Carol. I think Doug Hoffman was my designee. You guys met very, very consistently and made a recommendation. I think that's what we're kind of visioning here. We have, we have a history of doing that in the past. So I understand exactly what you're saying, Commissioner Barth. Yeah, that would make sense.
Are we going to take public interest into consideration by having people call the auditor's office or do we just want to appoint? I mean, that was another thing that was thrown off your, Commissioner Kelly?
I think appoint.
Okay, so each, so at this point?
I think that's what we're hired to do. And I think, yeah, you'd have a lot of applicants and stuff, but I think just if each commissioner appoints like Jeff suggested, plus the other two would either be automatic or be appointees way or nominees, I would think that'd be a cleaner way to do it. People can express an interest. There's no question about that, but.
Commissioner Pecos?
I really think it's important to have individuals that are at least educated and schooled in the process. And the reason why is because it would be very, very disappointing if we had an independent agency or an independent commission that was reviewing this pattern and practice saying, well, let's just vote by internet. You know, that's just not realistic. I think we need to have the confines of what the expectation under HAVA and federal election law as well as state law be in the mix here. Free thinking is great, but we have to be within the confines of what's permissible for legal elections.
Commissioner Benega, do you have any other comments?
Well, I think that the group to be operational has to be somewhere in that seven to 11 range, obviously with an odd number if we need it. But more importantly, I think that we, again, get representation from the state, from the county, from people who have used the system in the past. And it's about the process. It's not about the results of the election at this point. It's about getting to the point where we know that the information we're getting is accurate. And I think that's more about users than anybody else. Appointing someone from each of the county commissioners is probably possible. I guess, I would want some qualifications besides just someone who's agitated with the system. That's not qualification from my standpoint. It's an operational issue, so let's try to stick with an operational independent review if we could.
Okay. So what I'm hearing from you is that we would appoint seven people, five. Each commissioner would appoint one person. We could have the auditor's office appoint one person and Chantel Krebs, either herself or to appoint someone in her capacity to represent her at those meetings.
I'm comfortable with that.
Are you comfortable with that, Jeff?
Commissioner, yes. If I may, though, I think that we should have at least a cursory review of everyone's appointees before.
Oh, I agree. I agree. It'll end up coming back. Timeframe, what do we want for the timeframe for those appointees to come, to be brought back to act on? Because we're going to have to have, we're going to have to have it on the agenda to approve that panel once we've appointed those. So how much time do we need?
30 days.
For the panel?
To appoint the panel?
To appoint the panel.
Do you think that's too long, too quick?
It seems like kind of a long time. Commissioner Pecos, any comments on timeframe?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, one concern you're going to have is that whoever I designate, if it's within the timeframe, the new commissioner that the commission selects, obviously, that's not their designee. But given the fact that we're going to have that discussion next week, the longer we wait, even with a vacancy on the commission, I think it's really important that we move while the election's fresh. I think we need to go ahead and make our designation.
Yeah, I don't-
Should we shoot for-
The future commissioner, at this point, this is our-
This is, so do we think that we can get these people together within a week or do we need two weeks? One week?
Give two weeks, then, would you please?
Two weeks?
Commissioner Benega, do you have a thought on that? We're going both ways.
I'm not going to need two weeks. I know you think they got a lot- I know you think they've got lots of time on their hands, but the real issue is that I don't know that everybody's going to step up to the plate that you're going to ask who wants to be involved in this. So it may take us more time to find someone that we feel that understands the operation and the legality more than the other issues.
Okay. So are we in agreement that we could in two weeks bring this back to the agenda with a panel? That would be?
I agree.
I would agree with two weeks.
Okay, we'll go with two weeks. And this panel is to basically look at some of the questions that have been raised and the concerns, and to make this a safe open, and bring us back to the Commission. We can probably address further next week, in two weeks, as to what we want this panel to accomplish. Everybody all right with that?
Sounds good.
All right. Great. So we'll move forward. You got your marching orders. Robert?
Item 16 is to authorize the Chairman to sign the 2015 Minnehaha County Regional Detention Center per diem contracts between Minnehaha County and partner counties, Avon, Brookings, Charles Mix, Clay, Hanson, Hutchinson, Lake, Lincoln, McCook, Minor, Moody, Turner, and Yankton. Robert Wilson.
Commissioner Robert Wilson with the Commission Office again. We have here for your consideration the 2015 juvenile detention contracts between Minnehaha County VOA and the 14 counties that you have partnered with for many years as part of the 14-county cooperative, as you've come to know it. The new rates for 2015 will be $165 per day for secure and non-secure detention within the JDC, and $155, excuse me, and that's up $10 from $155 a day, the current rate. And then the Volunteers of America Dakotas will set their fee for the non-secure detention at $120 a day, and that is up $5 from their current rate of $115 a day. And again, this is a one-year agreement that will run from January 1 to December 31, 2015. And these are all individual contracts. They will, provided or with your approval today, they will then be forwarded to VOA. And VOA will review those, and then with both your approval and VOA's, those will be forwarded on to the 14 counties for their consideration as well.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? Commissioner Kelly?
Robert, these are all part of the consortium on the JDC. What about counties that are not part of that?
They are allowed, and the JDC does make room for additional counties on a space-available basis.
And at what rate?
I do not have that at my fingertips right now. That is under a different agreement, and I will need to check on that. I can get that for you very quickly. I just don't have that at my fingertips.
So this only applies to the people that are a member of the multi-county JDC group?
Yes, this is only a part of this 14-county group. And I will point out that the reason the rate is special, is different for these 14, is they have.
They participated in the building.
Minnehaha County for many years, and also supported the bonding for the most recent addition of the JDC. So there's a reason for that different rate.
Any other questions for Robert? Look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion and a second to authorize the Chairman to sign the JDC per diem rate. Roll call vote. Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Item 17 is to authorize the Chairman to sign an agreement with Haugie Associates for lien notification and collection services on behalf of Minnehaha County, Robert Wilson.
Commissioners again, Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. Haugie and Associates has been your provider for lien notification and collection services for a number of years. And their current contract will expire at the end of this year. In anticipation of the end of that contract, you did prepare an RFP and published an RFP to solicit bids to provide that service moving forward. You received a number of proposals, including Haugie Associates. And after a review process, you did elect to continue and sign a new agreement with Haugie. That new agreement with Haugie will take effect on January 1 of 2015. It'll be a three-year agreement through the end of 2017. If you would like, I can just briefly review the fee schedule on that new contract. That'll be 30% recovery on recoveries through non-legal collection efforts, and 30% on those recoveries where litigation is authorized by the County Commission. And that's significant to the point that those are actually lower collection rates than you are currently paying. It's currently 35% on the recoveries through non-legal collection, and 45 on those recoveries where litigation is authorized. As part of this agreement, Haugie also agrees to prepare necessary documents when they bring forward recommendations for lien compromise applications. And I should point out that there also will be no fee collected by Haugie for accounts where the county is receiving payment from the clerk of courts for attorney fees and other fees such as that. So this is, you had already in the past agreed to continue with Haugie on the new, moving forward. This is your actual consideration of the contract that we have prepared with Haugie following that direction from the Commission.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? Commissioner Kelly?
Robert, could you tell us the process? We have a lien against someone, or I guess a bad check, I don't know if these are included, but we have a lien. At what point, and who sends it to Haugie?
After a timeframe, and I can't tell you exactly what that time is, but after a set length of time, it trips their system, and they do make a notification.
They being?
Haugie.
Haugie.
And so that, the extent of that follow-up, and the mechanics of how they move through that, again, I would need to do a little more looking into that for you, but that...
Madam Chair, I think I remember, I think it's 12 months for criminal and 18 months for anything that's not criminal.
Okay, thank you.
So do you know what our process of billing in the interim is? Do we just, or notification? Say somebody runs up a $2,000 public advocate bill. John, apparently.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, there is an initial dunning letter sent by the county, but we don't follow up with anything after that, primarily because the amount of money that we expend vastly exceeds the recovery. And so there's initial communication, but then after that, it pretty much is going to sit unless we get money coming in until it goes to Haugie. And Cindy, if I'm wrong, you can correct me.
That's correct, yeah. Okay.
Commissioner Peckus, I appreciate that, because I was going to have to defer to the other.
Well, when you sit up here long enough, you tend to remember some things, so.
Any other questions for Robert? Look for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second to authorize signing the Haugie Associates for lien notification and collections. Roll call vote. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Item 18 is to authorize the Chairman to sign the 2015 lease agreement between court-appointed special advocate and Minnehaha County, Robert Wilson.
Once again, Robert Wilson with the County Commission Office. And as Cindy indicated, I have the 2015 lease agreement between the county and CASA. CASA is currently, in 2014, paying $7,000 to lease 1,500 square feet over in the old county extension building. And the 2015 amount will increase by $250 to $7,250 for the same 1,500 square feet of office space. Along with that, the county pays heat, electricity, and janitorial services, and CASA pays for their own phone bills and has access to the conference room in the building. And CASA is also responsible for maintaining workman's comp on their employees. And with all agreements, if either party felt necessary, this lease agreement could be terminated with 60 days' notice.
Any other questions for Robert on this contract or lease?
For a long time, CASA used to be here without any lease at all. And in an attempt to try to get control of our county campus, we actually got them on a lease. And I know that it's typically the amount of the money that they have to pay was part of their budget, that they receive a budget time. So it's almost, it's a wash. But the goal was to have everybody down here on a lease, so we had some sort of in-writing agreement as to who is actually occupying county space. So I'm going to support it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Robert? For a motion?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second to authorize signing of the lease for CASA in Minnehaha County. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Kelly?
Yesterday, you remember that some time ago, we restructured the Diversity Committee? And so yesterday was our first meeting. There'll be two a year, one in the spring, one in the fall. It's basically handled out of the HR department. So this initial meeting was more informational than anything else. We've got some new membership. We've got Representative Sheriff's Office of Equalization who has, although this is dealing with our employment issue, any of the department heads were invited, I think, to join. Lloyd is with issues with handicap access and stuff like that. So anyway, the primary mission of that group is to, there's three reports that have to be filed with the federal government. One's a veteran's report, one's an EEOC report, and one is, oh, help me with the last one. But there, one of them has to be filed annually, and we get the diversity report, I think, every year. So it's now underway. There was good participation, and hopefully it will go a little better than it did before. It was a little more active as a group before, but then nobody would show up at meetings. And so this is finally getting some people interested in making sure that we're in compliance with all the federal regulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Mr. Barth, did you have a liaison report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, last week, actually, we had the Homeless Advisory Board met, and I'm on that board. And Carol Muller, I did not report on it last week, although we did discuss the drop in temperature. And Carol Muller sent me this email here. "This week is Hunger and Homelessness Week. There are multiple activities going on, including the forum on November 19. The Bishop Dudley Hospitality House, opening in early January 2015, is coordinating several events, including churches actively praying for the project, along with a neighborhood meeting on Thursday night at the house. As of the last homeless count, there were over 600 people who are homeless." And if I might continue, she told me that the other night, that we put a record 32 families into hotels in town here. 32 in one night. It's a budget buster. And this woman who passed away, Irma, you know, that happened right after we had our Homeless Advisory Board meeting. And we talked about the fact that, you know, there's going to be a delay in getting the Bishop's Hospitality House going and the cold weather arriving. And we had the same thing last year with the Salvation Army, who has shouldered that burden for a few years, but waited until after Christmas to open up their warming shelter. This clearly is, you know, this cold weather is not something that waits until after Christmas. And this year, we're a little bit in tough shape. You know, any of us can become homeless at any time. I digress slightly here, but you know, back when we had the Missouri River flood and the million-dollar homes in Dakota Dunes were unoccupiable, people with, you know, large incomes and resources suddenly found themselves on the road. And, you know, think about a person living paycheck to paycheck who suddenly finds themselves on the street. And this is a tough time of year.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Kelly?
One other one. Jeff and I were at the township meeting last night, and it didn't go too bad. Sometimes it's a scary thing to walk into for us, but equalization, Kyle talked about the increases that'll be in ag valuations this year. Didn't get a lot of reaction, which was interesting. We talked a little bit about the blue signs.
Good.
And then Sean informed us about the program for the signage and stop signs. And I don't know, am I forgetting anything there, Jeff? You might...
Dick was, and I were both awake for the whole meeting.
It was very well attended.
It was well attended.
Yeah, what'd they have, maybe 50 people there? I don't know.
More than 50.
I think every township was represented by at least two people.
They usually have a very good turnout for that meeting. This room's usually full, so. Very good.
May I?
Yep.
We had to call Robert Wilson in from home last night to make the computer work.
Oh. I did have one more liaison report, and that was this morning, we had an advisory board for the Public Defender's Office. And one of the things that we did in our meeting was to look at a demonstration of the new case management program that is being rolled out in the Public Defender's Office. I'm sure everyone remembers the problems we had with an outside vendor that we worked with for years, put a lot of money down a rabbit hole with a lot of issues. Every time we needed to make a change, they wanted more money. Finally, just aborted that whole issue and went to our own IT department to make this case management program. The staff over there is very excited about it, and from what I could see from them just going through the demonstration, it's a fantastic program. Extremely lucky to have an IT department that is so talented. It has made discovery from the State's Attorney's Office over to the Public Defender's Office, a click of a button, basically filing the stuff, and it goes over. It also keeps track of, you know, where their clients are at. Are they in jail? It makes it easier for the department head over there to roll out the numbers as to how many cases each particular attorney has over there without having to go back and paperwork and count everything. It is a huge asset to them, and they feel like it will save them time and money as it goes on. Hopefully to be rolling out in the Public Advocates Office soon after some more of the bugs and get it worked out, and maybe some more additions as they find more possibilities of how it could work for them. But it was a very good demonstration, and the staff is excited about it. So thank you again to the IT department for the fabulous job they did on that program, saving all of us a lot of money. So any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Is there any old business, Robert? Your old business?
Only thing, under new business, I was just going to thank the Commission for your patience at the beginning of the meeting. We thought we had a really good system worked out to have Gerald, Commissioner Bennega, connected to the meeting. And I think after a little bit of improvising, we made it work, but do apologize for the disruption at the beginning of the meeting. We thought we had it figured out.
Well, Commissioner Bennega, we appreciate the fact that you would take the effort to be here, even if it's on telephone, because we always appreciate your comments.
No problem. I just want Jeff to know that I did see a purple pig fly by here.
That's pretty scary, that is pretty scary.
Well, the problem is, just before he got to the fence, he dropped a football.
Another comment? Okay.
And I would make one other comment, that Commissioner Kelly was part of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission meeting last week, and that is the Oversight Group for Safe Homes. And at that group, we were told... And at that, at that group, we were told that the operating account for Safe Home that is administered by Lloyd Company, our partner for that, is going to be repaying the county loan above and beyond the scheduled amount again this year. That will be, by, at the end of this year, will be a total of $100,000 above the scheduled repayment that, funds that will be coming back to the county from that loan that was originally set to, to get Safe Home up and going.
Thank you, Robert. I better make notes on what I was doing liaison reports, so thank you for that.
Well, in line with the Safe Home, I think last month's bills reflected, reflected that at least a third of the residents over there pay their own rent, and it is not paid by other entities or the county, that they actually pay their own rent.
And I'm stepping a little outside of my area of expertise. I would normally defer to Carol Muller on this, but I, I believe that has been the significant difference from what was expected in the pro formas at the beginning of, of the project to what you've actually seen, and has provided that ability to make those, those early payments, is a higher percentage of the, the residents who are making their rent payment.
Any other old business?
Commissioner, I just have been exchanging glances with our treasurer. I wonder if she had something she wanted to say or, or not.
Okay.
Are you flirting?
She has beautiful eyes.
I'd look for a motion to adjourn you into executive session for personnel.
And we have a legal issue as well.
Yeah, legal issue.
So I'll make a motion for personnel and legal.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote, please. Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Meeting adjourned.